Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. Vice President and Festerson is absent.
Please continue to stand. We did have two falling soldiers in our community this year. One on March 8th, Ronald Standard. And then we also had Gordon Brown on March 2nd. These two individuals were very significant in our communities. And at this time, I would like to give 30 seconds of silence in their honor. Thank you. You may be seated.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder in the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this week's meeting of the Omaha City Council. We're happy and thank you for being here with us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to silence or turn off all electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item 6, resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Windgate Ranch, replat 1, located northwest of 212th and Hickory Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Before we get started on item 6, if you're wondering what the flowers are up here today for, this squeezed in on me that it happens to be Councilmember Johnson's birthday. She turned 30 today. So, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
So, we'll definitely owe her for that one. Public hearing and vote on item 6 begins at this time. Proponents, please.
Jeff Stoll, E&amp;X, on the group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Item 6 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 7, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for F Street Crossing, located southeast of 204th and F Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote is today on item 7. Are there any proponents here today?
Hello again. Jeff Stoll, E&amp;X, on the group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Item 7 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 8, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Surranyity Estates, replat 1, located southwest of Skyline Drive and Stanford Circle. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on item 8 begin at this time. Proponents, please.
Douglas Streason, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Item 8 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 9, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for CIP Saddle Creek, located northwest of Saddle Creek Road and Pacific Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. These communications in opposition.
Public hearing and vote on item 9 begin at this time. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me today is Randy Chevallé with CIP, the developer on this particular project. Also with me today is Eric Williams and Dan Belize of Olson. They're the consulting engineers on this particular project. And then also with me today is Dave Johnson of Studio 951. He is the architect for this particular project. So, I guess procedurally, I want to talk a little bit about this before we can get into the presentation. But what's before you today on the agenda is the preliminary plat. And you'll see in a couple of weeks, we have a redevelopment plan on March 29th that will be before you on a public hearing. And then also as part of this approval of this project is an amendment to the future land use map. There's also rezoning from R4 and GI to R7 medium density residential housing and community commercial CC with a major commercial overlay district along Saddle Creek, as well as a planned unit redevelopment. And those three items, the amendment to the future land use map, the rezoning, and the final plat, and the PUR will come before this city council with the final plat sometime down the road. Because, again, this is the preliminary plat. The final plat then goes to Planning Board, and then everything comes back to the city council. But I think in order to understand what we're doing and what the project is about today, we need to really talk about all the things that you'll see later. And maybe that'll shorten some of the public hearings down the road. Because hopefully you'll be aware of this project, not that we can't go over it all again, and we will if we need to. But just with your permission, Mr. President, I guess we probably need to talk about the zoning and the PUR and the amendment to the future land use map and all the various things that will be coming down the road to really fully understand what you're approving today, which is a preliminary plat. And I guess the only thing I would say about that upfront is there's plenty of time between the preliminary plat and the final plat to discuss other items if we need to. And then obviously, as part of the redevelopment plan in a couple of weeks, we can talk more about the TIF. I'm not really going to get into the TIF aspect of it today. That's more of the financial aspects of this particular project. So with all that, I will proceed with what we have on the agenda for today. What this first exhibit is, is showing the existing conditions of the property that's part of this redevelopment plan, as well as the adjacent properties. Everything you see outlined in black here is part of this particular project. And what you have here along Saddle Creek is a couple of commercial businesses. You have Forest Green, which is a landscaping and lawn service company. Then you have United Rental that's here just south of that. Then there is a five-unit apartment complex, actually six-unit apartment complex here. There's five residential homes. And then you've got 49th Street that you can see that runs through here at this location. That will be vacated. And then what you have over here on the west side of the proposed development is 49th Avenue. And 49th Avenue actually has been platted as right-of-way for probably 100 years, maybe longer. I never went back and looked at the original plat. But it's been platted and dedicated as right-of-way for quite some time. But I've got some photographs here that will show you that it's never actually been improved. So with this project, 49th Avenue will actually be constructed, actual street paving. And like many older parts of the city, again, this particular project outlined in black here, like many of the older parts of the city, as you know, there's a lot of places that are kind of a mishmash of zoning. So what you can see here is you've got CC with an MCC corridor overlay district to the north. Part of this property is actually zoned in blue, the general industrial. And there's actually general industrial, believe it or not, and that little sliver here where the multifamily is. And then you've got R4 zoning. And then to the north, you have general commercial. You've got R5 zoning. You have R4 zoning. And then across the Saddle Creek, you have the BOSS, which was recently redeveloped. That's another apartment complex that some of you were actually on the council when that went through. That's R8 MCC with a PUR, which is very similar to what's being proposed with this development, although this development's in R7 zoning with MCC and a PUR on top of it as well. So, as you can see, there's kind of a mishmash of zoning. I'll get into the amendment to the future land use map a little later. But this shows you the future land use map today. And again, the actual existing zoning is really inconsistent with the future land use map today. Because what you have is, this is CC with an MCC overlay, district all in red along Saddle Creek. And then you have R4 here, I should say, low-density residential housing in yellow. And so the amendment that you'll see to the future land use map is really keeping the CC MCC overlay along Saddle Creek. And then all we're doing is changing the R4, which is low-density housing, to R7, but really a high-density residential zoning as far as the master plan designation is concerned. So I'll get more into why we're doing that down the road. As far as the existing conditions as well, I went out to 49th Street. And if you recall, from 49th Street is right in this location here. That street is currently in place. It will be vacated, and it will be torn up. And actually, the building will be located along 49th Street. But I did go out and along 49th Street and took some photographs from 49th Street looking to the east. And in the background, you can see the BOSS, the R8 apartment complex here across Saddle Creek. And you'll notice from these photographs, and we'll get into this a little bit later with respect to the building elevations and the site plan, and showing how the property and the elevation really changes from west to east and north to south. And so what you can see here looking east is there's about a 20-foot drop in elevation and grade change from 49th Street to Saddle Creek. And so again, from this location here to Saddle Creek, it drops about 20 feet. That same elevation drop is from north to south along this location, too. I have another photograph, just another location along 49th Street that shows the BOSS in the background. And then, as you can see, the commercial uses are 20 feet below, so you can't even see their rooftops from this particular location. Then what I have is, this is a photograph that I took of 49th Avenue. And as I mentioned earlier, this right-of-way's been dedicated for many, many years. It just never has been improved as a street. But it is owned by the public, and there just hasn't been a street there. So with this particular development, 49th Avenue will be constructed from Mayberry. And we've been working with Public Works down to Pacific. And then from 49th Avenue to 50th Street, as far as a Pacific Street extension. So we're working with Public Works right now as to how we get that done. But that will alleviate a lot of the traffic that will be generated by this project. But you'll see in a little while that very little of that, this traffic from this multifamily housing project or the two commercial lots along Saddle Creek will really use the residential streets because their direct access is really off Saddle Creek. So the preliminary plat that's before you today, I just kind of outlined this this morning with my highlighters. But you can see the three lots. You've got the blue, the pink, and the purple. So this is the Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3. Lot 1 is the multifamily housing project. And the two other lots are proposed commercial uses in the future. We're thinking it's probably a credit union or a coffee shop or something like that. But they're relatively small lots. They support relatively small buildings. And I'll get into the square footage of those a little later. So, we really get into then, and really the main focus of this particular approval process and this development, is the multifamily housing on Lot 1 that is along 49th Avenue, the commercial uses along Saddle Creek. Again, there's no real plan for what's going to be there, but we are creating two commercial lots that will be marketed, again, likely uses, credit union, coffee shop. This kind of shows another site plan here, again, multifamily back here. And then you have the two commercial buildings here and here along Saddle Creek. This is 49th Avenue, and this is Mayberry up here to the north. So just to give you an idea. So, this kind of shows the elevation, kind of a high aerial view of the proposed elevation. And what we're seeking with a PUR, the planned unit redevelopment, I kind of will go through that first, is this is 49th Avenue, this is Mayberry, and this is Saddle Creek on the backside here. And so, we worked with the planning staff for almost a year now, a little over a year actually, on making sure that this proposed multifamily housing project was compatible with the adjacent uses to the north and to the west, because that's where the residential neighborhood is to the west and to the north of this particular development. And so you'll notice, and we'll get into the elevations in more detail here, but this shows along 49th Avenue where you have this row house look. And the whole idea was to make these look like row houses. There's a building that's back here, but it's, these buildings are separated, and then there's a setback in the buildings. They have pitched roofs. This is very, you know, the articulation is such to make it look more like a kind of a single-family residential row house look along 49th Avenue. And so one of the requests of planning was to have it more residential in character. Well, in doing that, you want to pull it closer to the street and make it feel more residential in character, very similar to the BOSS across Saddle Creek on Pacific Street. And so we did pull that up. And so one of the waivers that is required is a modification of the front yard setback from 35 feet to 8 feet for the entryway. And that's just at that one location here, that you see that entryway that kind of protrudes out from the building here. And then the rest is 17.83 feet to the front of the building line. That's the rest of the inline row houses here. So, but the idea was, in working with planning, is to make it more compatible with the residential use, make it have more of a residential look and feel, and pull that up to the street. And so one of the waivers was to have this little entryway feature along 49th Avenue. Also, there's impervious coverage from 70% to 72%. These things are, you know, a little more in detail than we probably need to get into. But the buffer yard along the north was reduced from 30 feet to 20 feet along Mayberry. And really, the primary reasons for the PUR and granting these types of waivers under our guidelines is that when you have innovative projects and innovative land uses, you really need relief from some of the site regulators that would otherwise apply. Because our zoning code applies to all different parts of the city, including infill-type projects where it's more difficult to meet the site regulator. So the PUR allows you to have those waivers and variances when you need them to make sure that you can have these types of projects in the inner city. And so that's why the PUR is used. And it's primarily because of the irregular shape of the property, the grade change, the topography, and really, in general, just the ongoing development and redevelopment along Saddle Creek from really this location all the way north through the Med Center and Project Next, and getting into the TOD, which is north of Leavenworth. So all of those things kind of goes into the whole idea of why you grant these waivers with a planned unit redevelopment. And again, we worked very hard with the planning staff to accommodate what they thought this project ought to look like, adjacent to the residential neighborhood, to the north and to the west. So I have a couple other kind of elevations. So again, this is kind of the overall view from the northwest. You'll see the courtyard in the middle here. That's where all the amenities are for the apartment residence. You see the buffer yards along the west and the north side. This is a view from the southwest. So you're looking really northeast. This shows the row houses along 49th Avenue here. And then this shows the elevations on the south side and how the, remember, we talked about the pretty dramatic drop in elevation where, you know, you have three stories shown here, but when you get to this side, you're anywhere from five to six stories just because of the grade change between 49th Avenue as you get closer to Saddle Creek. This is a view from the west. So this is looking at the row house and the residential character. Notice the pitched roofs. Also, you can't tell necessarily from this exhibit, but this is where the articulation is in between these buildings. Between this building here and this building here, you notice the building is really setback. And so you have these row houses more out in front along 49th Avenue to have that residential look and feel. This is a view from the northwest. So we're actually looking southeast at this particular location. This would be Mayberry. This would be 49th Avenue. And then this is a view from the northeast. So you're actually looking southwest at the building. This is all along Saddle Creek, and so it's consistent with the BOSS. The commercial lots that we talked about are out in front here. And then this would be along Mayberry. But notice, again, the 20-foot drop. You really only have a view of four of the stories along the north side, and then three of the stories here with the row houses, because there are only three stories. And then so nowhere from the residential neighborhoods to the west or the north do you see this height that you have here. And so that is showing, and this is the last view from the southeast, so you're actually looking northwest from this particular angle. This is the amenity locations, the clubhouse and the leasing offices, et cetera. Also, I guess I should say, back here is the parking garage, and we'll get into that. There's two floors of parking. There's 277 off-street parking spaces required. We actually have 293 provided. And there's two levels of parking within the structure, and that's in this location here. And I'll show you the access points. There's an access point on the east side of the building and also on the south side of the building, not into the residential neighborhood at all. And there are 140 spaces on each one of the floors. So there's a total of 280 stalls inside the building that are constructed. And the unit count, there's a total of 195 units. And there's, the unit mix is 80 studio units, 67 one-bedrooms, and 48 two-bedroom apartment units. This is conventional financing, so it's market rates, rents. The studios are estimated to go for about $1,064 a month. The one-bedrooms are expected to be $1,319 a month. And the two-bedrooms are expected to be $1,699 a month. So, again, Class A apartments, conventional financing, market rate rents. The, we talked about this a little bit in the courtyard, the amenities. You have grilling areas, seating areas, green space, fire pits, et cetera. And so it gets me here to the actual building elevations where I can share the height with you and kind of go around the entire building. Maybe we can do it more zoomed in with respect to each particular side. But the R7 zoning classification allows for buildings to be 75 feet in height. So you'll see here when we go around the entire building, it's actually substantially less than the 75 feet in height all the way around. So depending on where you look at the building, whether you're on the east, north, south, or west side of the building, depends on how many stories that you'll actually see. And so on the north side, which is this top elevation here, again, this is along Mayberry, drops down, this would be more Saddle Creek. This would be 49th Avenue. So you notice that you have anywhere from three to four stories on the north elevation, three stories being the row houses here on the west side of the proposed development. And then it steps up to really four stories of visible apartment units along the north side as you go to the east side of the site towards Saddle Creek. And we're showing that at about 47 feet in height at this location. And that's to the very top peak of the roof. You know, the planning department actually measures it to the midpoint of the roof. But we're actually showing you what it is to the peak, so the highest point. And it goes from 47 to 48 feet of visible building on the east side of the proposed north elevation. So then you get to, the next one would be the east elevation. And the east elevation is anywhere from five to six stories. So it's five stories on the south side. It steps up to six stories on the north side of the development. Again, this east elevation is not visible at all from any of the residential neighborhoods to the west or to the north. This is all along Saddle Creek. And so this will range in height between 68 feet on the north side, down to 63 feet on the south side. And that's six stories here, again, two stories of parking, and then four stories up. This is the entry point to the structured parking at this location on the east side of the proposed multifamily project. The next elevation is the south elevation. And so, the south elevation ranges between three and five stories. And again, this would be the west side of the development, so you have three stories. This again is the row houses along 49th Avenue. And then as the elevation drops, you know, the 20-foot grade change, it now is, has about five stories visible. And that height again, on the row house side is 47 feet. And then it gets to approximately 63 feet to the peak on the east side of the proposed elevation on the south. There is also another location for the parking garage. The structured parking is at this location here on the south elevation. And then finally, from the west side, and again, this is the side that's the more residential in character, the row houses, that is 47 feet to the peak of these row houses. And then this is showing 50 feet, but the 50 feet is to the, only in two places. It's in this location and in this location. And that's the kind of the transitional part of the roof that steps up from the row houses to the rest of the building. So otherwise, it's the 47 feet along the row house side, and then it steps up to 50 feet, but only in those two particular locations. As far as the architectural design, we've, again, been working with the planning staff for over a year to make sure it's consistent with the urban design code and making sure that... that the buildings are articulated, the roof lines are residential in character. And then the east side is the flat roof, looking more like the commercial side of the development than it should be along Saddle Creek, which is more of the major arterial roadways. As far as the building materials, it's brick, metal panels, glass, and wood-looking siding is what's being proposed. Dave Johnson, the architect, is here. He explained a little bit the rationale, I guess if you will, for the architectural style and feel of the building, if you have any questions regarding that. We talked about the parking. There is 15 parking spaces on the west side of Forty-Ninth Avenue, which are on-street parking. Then there's 15 on-street parking stalls on the east side of Forty-Ninth Avenue, which will be constructed. And we talked about the two commercial lots. I think we're looking at Lot Two, being the credit union would maybe support a building that's 3140 square feet. And then the coffee house on Lot Three, which is the southern commercial lot, would support a building of about 2,500 square feet. As far as public improvements are concerned, we are, like I said, working with Public Works to construct Forty-Ninth Avenue, which, again, has been publicly dedicated for many, many, many years and yet not improved. So, it'll be an urban section, curb and gutter, built to public standards, City Omaha standards. And that will go from Mayberry down to Pacific, from Forty-Ninth Avenue to 50th Street. So, that will be a residential street. Obviously, it'll support the on-street parking on both sides of Forty-Ninth Avenue. There's, we're working with, well, then we have new sidewalks, there's new street lighting, new storm sewer improvements, and then there's a power pole relocation. Like with any redevelopment project, you're always having to relocate utilities typically in, in fill and redevelopment type projects. As far as the amendment to the master plan, this is an exhibit that the planning department put together. This kind of shows the existing master plan. I went through that with the, that kind of more blown-up exhibit of the master plan. And this shows the change really of what we're doing from the high density, from the low density to the high density. Otherwise, everything really stays the same. And, you know, the rationale for the change in the master plan to allow for this particular project is, is really the GI zoning's not consistent with, or compatible with the existing and adjacent R4 zoning to the north and to the west of the industrial property to the east. So, really, you're trying to eliminate this industrial property that really isn't appropriate at this particular location. We don't believe the property is really viable for industrial uses any longer and the general industrial zoning classification is really obsolete for this area. The property, as you can see from the photographs that we had here, and just looking down at the kind of industrial look, you know, we don't believe this property's really effectively utilized and we think it's underutilized and vacant and deteriorating and obsolete in its current condition and in need of redevelopment. And the mix of zoning is in, actually, we believe is an impediment to the redevelopment of this particular area. And that's one of the other reasons for the amendment to the master plan. And when we look at amending the future land use map, you look at, are there other important goals of the master plan that are being accomplished by this particular project? And there are many of them, actually. And one of them is improving the overall aesthetics along Saddle Creek. If you go drive down Saddle Creek right now, you've got the curb and the sidewalk and then you've got fences for the industrial uses there. So, the streetscape will look dramatically better with this particular project. It will redefine the street layout and the improvement of the streetscape along Saddle Creek. It'll be, it'll allow the property to be more effectively utilized for multifamily housing, office, and commercial uses and will eliminate the obsolete existing industrial uses along Saddle Creek. There's, of course, one of the components of the master plan is providing diversity of housing, which this project will also do. Also, it will create jobs in redeveloping this as well as managing it. And then, of course, you have the two commercial properties along Saddle Creek. The market study, there was a market study done by the developer that shows this type of housing being in proximity to UNMC and the whole Project Next and Innovation Campus and based upon the occupancy rates in this area, this is a good use for this particular property. And it's also in close proximity to the transit-oriented development designation under the Omaha City Code. So, with that, we think there's numerous reasons for amending the master plan to allow for this particular project. And we did have a lot of conversations with the neighbors, the adjacent neighbors. We had many, many meetings. Planning staff was there, Public Works was there. A council member, Begley, attended quite a few of them and he had his own meetings with them. We had our own meetings with them. I had numerous phone calls with them, lots of correspondence. And so, our hope was to try to minimize the impacts and make it as compatible as possible with the adjacent residential neighbors to the north and to the east while maintaining the more commercial look and providing the density along Saddle Creek that is needed to make this project feasible. This comes to you with favorable recommendations from the TIF committee, although we'll get into the TIF on March 29th. Comes to you with favorable recommendations from the various departments. Also, had unanimous recommendation of approval from the planning board a couple months ago. So, with that, we are happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding this particular development. And obviously, I'll respond to any opposition to the extent I can.
Thank you, Mr. Jobin.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents for item nine? Okay, seeing none? Nope. Before we get started with the opponents, could I see a show of hands of who would like to speak as in opposition, just so I kind of have an idea? Okay, thank you. So, we'll utilize the light system today. Once you give your name and address, the light will turn green. You'll have five minutes. At 30 seconds, it'll turn yellow. When it turns red, we'll ask you to finish up your comments. There is also the opportunity, if council members have questions, that you'll be able to be allowed more time. So, thank you for that. With that, are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. Might be a stretch, but I'm not too far from this area. Nice presentation. And a salesman's primary job is to close the order the first time he's there as possible. Drop the pen in your lap and ask you to sign. He hasn't asked that yet. But wasn't there something in the rules about 10 minutes for a presentation? Total of 20? They get 10, we get five maybe, then they get 10 to rebut us. I didn't see a clock for him. But the overall picture here is, I remember in the 70s, was it? When we blew up a lot of nice buildings down there that could have been utilized for a lot of things we're doing right now. What wasn't said here clearly was, well, next week, there'll probably be the TIF application. It doesn't say TIF here. And you get one crack at it next week or next hearing, whatever, to maybe talk about that and talk against it. I'm talking against it now because it will show up. I guess OIC stands for Improvement District or something. But then all of a sudden, it'll become a TIF project. And he did make a reference to favorable recommendations from the TIF committee, of course. And then finally, the skyline of Omaha is disappearing. Now, I live up high on the Upper Dundee area, well, east of 52nd, I'm sorry. But there's a lot of the east skyline that we no longer see because of some of these same-type developments. Now, that area that this is going to be built in is very low. So, you bring in a lot of dirt. You raise it way up and then you build a six-story or more. But you try to hide part of it with dirt. And you try to say the neighborhoods to the north, where people like me might live, no interference with them, except the skyline. You need to stop some of this stuff. Maybe better other areas, but this looks like one of those museums in Europe, the Louvre, or the Queen's Castle in England, or the King's Retreat in England. This is not a small structure. And we have a candidate that'll be announcing probably in the very near future for Douglas County Sheriff, that pointed out at a meeting the other night that young people aren't coming and young people aren't staying. You are going to have so many of these structures vacant because young people don't want to live here. But we're building them to try and keep them here and try and attract them from the east coast, west coast? No, they're all headed up to the northwest. We never talk about that, do we? So, I helped pay for the buildings that went in downtown after we blew all those up. Somebody walked away from those buildings. Taxpayers put the bill. Well, then Con Agar left Omaha and we footed the bill for that. And then we tried to erase it by building a park. And here we go again, repeating the same mistakes. I don't know who owned that property down there before or was kind of a smelters. But did they walk away from that building and not take care of their responsibility to clear that property or pay off and, and make sure that it wasn't blighted or dangerous? Or did the taxpayers pay for that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Store. Next opponent, please. Come on up, whoever wants to be next.
I can't see you all, so.
Yeah, just pull that microphone down just a little bit.
My name is Colleen Tanner. I live at 846 South Forty-Ninth Street. I'm on the corner of Forty-Ninth and Mayberry. I am here to oppose this building development for several reasons. And it is the size, number one, and it just does not fit into our neighborhood. I am going to be right across from that on Forty-Ninth and Mayberry. As you see, he's got nothing on my side, other than the building. When we were in front of the planning department, they did not like the size over towering my home and had recommended some maybe row houses or something to be put in there so it would kind of fit into the neighborhood. I am really the only homeowner that lives on that side of the Mayberry. The others are rentals, so there is no one else that really cares because they're never home. The size of this will block the sun from me, take away all my life that I spend out in my yard. The developer has met with us once. Mr. Jobin has not met with us at all since the planning meeting, like he was instructed to. We've had no conversations with him at all. He was told to meet with us after the meeting and talk to some of us neighbors and out the door he went. So, really, that information was not true and correct. We've had one meeting with Randy and Jim Otis with our concerns and that was it. Nothing has come back. I just have a couple questions as far as with this planning department approving all of this with a lot of open ends to this project. It was approved, but we still have a lot of unanswered questions with it. Then it's passed on to city council and there's still a lot that has not been answered for any of us. The height and bulk of this building and the size, there's just a lot of things that are really a concern. I had sent a letter into the city council and asking some questions. And Mr. Jobin has answered some and some have been returned with no comment. We also know that Public Works is going to be involved a lot. Our streets are very narrow. They're run down. Our sewers are broken. We have parking on one side of the streets, Forty-Ninth down Mayberry. We have non-stop cars, over 120 cars that we catch on our ring. This is going to only increase more traffic onto our streets. With parking, and I'm right there at that curve, no two cars can make that turn. I've lived there over 30 years. So, I've watched this over the years. So, when you have your vehicles that can't pass each other and everything gets backed up, there's a problem. When there's an accident on Leavenworth Street, approximately 50th and there, it's like there is a parade that goes through our neighborhood, both directions. So, I'm asking the city council to please take a long, hard look at this whole project because for this little neighborhood, it's been great. These homes that they bought were all perfect, standing condition, and these people were living in them. They paid them the money. Now, they want to take over and put this monster-sized building that does not fit into our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next opponent, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Melina Peterson and I live at 4953 Mayberry Street and I own property on 968 and 972 South Forty-Ninth Ave. So, okay, very good. So, basically, as you can see what Mr. Jobin had posted, this is the development. I have highlighted my property. This, this is what I will have. So, we object to this whole development process. Yes, we were able to voice our objections at the planning board meeting, but because the planning department made sure all of the criteria were met, there is no reason to not pass the request. And here we are today in front of all of you, asking for this development to have a no vote. But as everyone knows, that once the planning board gives their stamp of approval, it's a done deal. Yet, we are asking you to please send the developers back to the planning board for a more reasonable structure and constructive neighborhood input. This development will cause financial and physical hardship for me. First, a street will be paved where there hasn't been one for over 100 years. My family has lived on this property for 70 years. We've never had a street. Now, this is coming in. We never claimed it was part of the yard. We always knew it was a street. But that was not something that we, I had to worry about when I bought my property. This is what it looks like now. So, when I'm standing on my back porch, this is what the current view is. But, Mr. Jobin, what they want to do is basically, it's going to look like this. So, all of my trees, all of my privacy, now, this is what I have. So, the street, so with the street comes parking. And as Mr. Jobin said, they're going to have parking for the apartment, the development. And because of the street, we have to have a sidewalk because that's the code. But because I own all of this property that goes from here all the way down, I am the one who's responsible for, let's see here, I am the one responsible for clearing the ice melt snow, which is like an additional 350 feet of sidewalk. The sidewalk does not lead to a house, but it is, in fact, the developer's owner's benefit to have more parking. Currently, as you've seen, my yard is open and people think it is a park since it is open, well-kept, and peaceful. My hardship will be to keep people out of my yard. With this development, I am losing my privacy, safety for my daughter, and peace and quiet. Should you approve this development, I am requesting the following be added as conditions for approval. A written agreement that the developer or buyer maintains the upkeep, such as the ice melt or snow removal, of the sidewalk on the west side of Forty-Ninth Ave. That the developer pays and installs a quality eight-foot, eight-to-10-foot privacy fence the entire- the entire length of the new sidewalk being installed on the west side of Forty-Ninth Ave. The developer provides quality trees to help with the privacy and noise reduction on the west side of Forty-Ninth Ave. With these conditions being enforced, this will help mitigate some of my concerns. Development is going to happen, we just wanted to have input in the beginning when this all started. Thank you for your time and thank you for everyone who signed a petition and or came down to show your support. I have a petition that we, I think there's been a couple of things that have been submitted, but I have petition that we have signed. And I want to clarify also that I spoke to Mr. Jobin once on the telephone. And I have had conversations with Randy, that is correct. They have not been as constructive because he doesn't have the answers. So we still have questions. We just need this to be something more reasonable, this is too big. We have a four-block neighborhood and this has taken three of them. So we're asking for a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you have something you'd like to give the clerk to be part of the record, you certainly could.
Thank you.
Next opponent.
Hello. My name is Debbie Rushlaw, ten ten South Forty-Ninth Avenue, six eight one oh six. Okay, let's see, where do I want to start? First of all, I want to address the meetings that Mr. Jobin is saying took place. Randy attended two of our meetings that we started, we put in place, we found the place to have the meeting. Mr. Jobin, I spoke with you once on the phone, the only meeting that you ever had with us was the virtual meeting. That is not several meetings. Not even close. Mr. Bagley attended one of our meetings. And we asked him if he would join us for a small gathering that we had and he did. And he answered a lot of our questions and gave us insight as to how this works because we really didn't know the protocol and how things go. And so we're very appreciative of that, thank you for attending. Talking about I'll probably be all over the map here, but I'm going to start with this. Mr. Jobin talking about the drop-off. And this is what I will see out my back door. My house sits over here. And right here where this building is fifty feet, right here where this building is, is my property. And it's elevated and it has perhaps, there will be a thirty to forty-foot drop-off on my property going down. At our meetings, we asked what's going to be done about that? The first meeting, we asked about that, what will be done? How are you going to, are you going to put a tie wall, rock wall, you have to have railings? We have grandchildren that live right there on the property and back. Our property is right here. When you come down Pacific and you turn on Forty-Ninth Ave, that is not, this is Forty-Ninth Ave here that we've all been talking about. And our property extends all the way up here. It goes over here and it comes over here. And this is where the elevation will drop off because their building is going to be right here, this entire length of this. This is where the apartment will be extending down here. The first meeting that we had with Randy, we asked about that and that was a concern. And he said, oh, you know, it's on the plans. Well, every time we ask about the plans, we're told these aren't the final plans. Well, how can we have concerns and questions about plans that aren't final? So we asked him the first time, how is that going to be done? I don't know, you'll have to talk to an engineer. We met last Monday with him. He said he thought he was meeting with a couple of neighbors to talk about our concerns. And I said, what do you, what do you think we're asking? That's what we're talking about, our concerns. The last meeting, we asked you about this drop-off. We're very concerned about that on our property. And he didn't have an answer, he didn't know. You'll have to talk to the engineer about that. This picture is the same picture that I will see out my back, same as what Melina saw. Every, all of this, all of these buildings, the apartments that have these lovely little pitched roofs. Don't they just look so nice? They look really nice in our backyard. No one ever talked to us about any of this. Which is the point I'm getting to now. This entire process, from the start, for the past two and a half years, probably close to three now, that we've been asking about this, that is there a project going on? We hear, you know, there's rumors, people are selling their houses. No, 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 there's nothing going on. There isn't a thing going on. We don't have any, we don't have anything on the books that says there's a project going on, talking with the planning department. Yet on December twentieth, we get a postcard that says you need to go to a meeting. Here's a meeting for the new project that's coming up and we go to the planning board on January fifth, over Christmas. The first meeting, December twentieth, January fifth. That's how long we had to prepare, to investigate, to go over our concerns, to ask questions about all this. Clearly none of our answers, none of our questions were answered, anywhere along the line from anyone. Until the permit was filed.
If you could summarize for us.
Okay.
And there still could be more time for you if council members have a question, please.
We don't have any, we don't have any historical buildings on the register. So we know where this is going. We ask you to lay this over or say no. We don't want this in our backyard. There are no plans, as Mr. Jobin said, to extend Forty-Ninth Avenue to Fiftieth Street as of yesterday. Not Pacific and not Forty-Ninth Avenue, past the plat of the apartments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next opponent, please.
My name is Mark Luckt, I live at eight two four South Forty-Ninth Street. I'm not opposed to development, but this is not a good plan. What does Midtown need? Affordable, single-family homes, not banks and coffee shops. There are five coffee shops within one mile of this project. There are five banks within two miles of this project. This area, this area could be developed to accommodate an apartment building as well as single-family homes, such as row houses or townhomes. This area has been like it is for a hundred years. The least you can do is take a couple of months to review some alternate plans. If the developer doesn't have any ideas, I do. The developers can do better than this and you should insist on it. I just don't know what the rush is. This, this is going to be here for fifty years, seventy years, whatever. I think you can take a little bit of time to look at some different options. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next opponent.
How you doing? Scott Tanner, eight forty-six South Forty-Ninth. I live right on the corner of Forty-Ninth and Mayberry. Apparently you guys have already gave the okay because they're starting to take down buildings as we speak right now. Garages are being torn down. So, just so you know. Anyway, the thing I don't quite get is you guys proposed thirty-five feet back from the road, but the planning board said, no, let's go to Torni. So that brought it closer to my house, my wife's house. And you know, it's like, it's like Mark said, what page are we on? Are we in a complete different book or what's? You know. As a zoning, ten years ago or so, we got together with everybody that got bought out. We were all industrial. So we better protect ourselves and go residential because we wouldn't have this issue. Well, everybody bought out, sold out, except for, you know, me and Colleen are there. Now we're the ones there. As some of the others, Forty-Ninth and Av, maybe there's a reason why it was never paved. You know, there are a lot of underground springs in the area. So, I mean, it's like everybody said, let's look at things. Down on, by Mute Electric, apparently there's oil in the ground from the previous owners. That's, you know, EPA. And then, you know, like when they do tear the buildings down, what about the asbestos, the lead in the air? I, we've got to keep that in mind for safety. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. Next opponent, please.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
My name's Tom Heligso, I live at one fifty-four fifty-six Dewey Circle, six eight one five four. I grew up and my dad's dad built the house at nine seventy-four South Fiftieth Street in nineteen twenty-three. My mom lived there till she was a hundred and two, till she passed away about a year ago. I've been a licensed realtor for forty-seven years and I still work full-time in the real estate business. I've seen many of these types of infill development projects come over through the years. And I usually don't have a problem with any of them and most of them are quite an improvement. I do think, however, that there are significant issues with the CIP Salal Creek development as presently proposed. Number one was my concern about the size and massiveness of the project in an area of small houses and narrow streets that are already congested with lots of parking on the street and sometimes it's just hard to drive, drive down the road. And this will just only add to that congestion. The fact that the Salal Creek still floods, as indicated by the flooding two years ago. And I remember as a kid numerous times wading through two or three feet deep water when Salal Creek flooded. And I'm not sure they've totally got that rectified yet. Number three concern, the properties just to the west of this proposed development owned for decades, decades by the Petersons and the Rushlaws and Tubricks, as you've heard from, are very special and unique pieces of ground. These properties have been our neighborhood field of dreams for over seventy years. It is a space where hundreds, maybe thousands of kids from our neighborhood and adults have gathered to safely play baseball, football games, play kick the can, climb trees, build forts, swing on rope swings and just generally hang out. It's a real oasis in the middle of the city. The rules were simple back then, no swearing and no fighting. And everyone gets to play, no matter what the age of the kid was. It was a wonderful place for fun and fellowship. Animals love that area too, with it being home to many dogs, cats, ducks, geese, pigeons, turkeys, chicken, goats, turtles, foxes. And it's just a truly unique oasis in the middle of town. This project would greatly affect the personality of that area. The biggest problem I have with this proposed development, aside from what I've already mentioned, is how it would overwhelm the neighborhood with its size and proximity to neighbors, especially those bordering on the north and west of this project. The proposed extension of Forty-Ninth Avenue to the south will cut right through the field of dreams. I understand that the city has the right to do that and they have a right of way. It has always been part of our playground, I would just say, and part of the sanctuary of that area. The project will overcrowd and loom over the area where dozens of kids are still playing and running around. The project will bring hundreds of more residents to the area. And that will totally change the safety aspect, the peace and tranquility that is now found in this area. I urge the city council to not rubber stamp this project without further compromise on the size and proximity to neighbors. Areas like this are rare and sanctuaries to the people that live there. I urge the city council to slow down and to reassess this whole proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other opponents?
Bradley Smith. I live at the other end, I live on the ninety-nine seventh South Fiftieth Street. I've lived in, I live on the other end from Mayberry, I live in Pacific. And I have lived with the house for twenty-five years. I don't know how it affects me, I've heard, oh, they might pay Pacific, they might not. I've never once heard from this gentleman, phone call, meeting, nothing. He talked about employing, bringing employees and stuff into the neighborhood. I own a business. I employ people in the neighborhood, I stayed in the neighborhood for a reason. I had chances to move. I chose to stay there in my little house. So sorry, a little emotional. I just came to support my neighbors today. And I asked it, what everybody else was asking, is maybe a little more time? Because we did, we heard about it on December twentieth and had, what, a week, week and a half to see what was going on. And I'm a little more in dark with some of my neighbors, but like I said, I've never once had a phone call, meeting with anybody, but I just came to support my neighbors today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents here today?
Hi, my name's Alex O'Hanlon, thirty-ten Lincoln Boulevard. I just wanted to bring attention to, at the planning board meeting, a water engineer did call attention to the flooding probabilities of this site. And at that time, I think maybe Mr. Jobin came up and addressed some of that and just said that like the barrier was going to be high enough that the garage wouldn't flood. But some of the folks that have come up have talked about how there are springs all over this place. Actually, it used to be a carbonated mineral spring, it's still there underneath Dingman's Auto Collision. Used to be a mineral bottle watering facility, so pretty interesting. But I, I was walking down here during Mr. Jobin's presentation, so I might have missed something. But I didn't hear anything addressing the flooding issues and insurance costs are going up for homeowners because of flooding and other extreme weather. So I think it's really important that we don't just rubber stamp things that are probably going to flood, have a very high probability of flooding. The new FEMA flood maps are out. And so I think that maybe like laying this over, I guess what I would say is, I'm asking you to lay this over for all of the reasons that the neighbors have already mentioned, but also to address this flooding issue. It's a sort of thing that is going to cost residents more money. And I also just hope that when we have our conversation about the climate action plan coming up, hopefully later this year, that we call attention to these sort of issues and we have deep conversations about this. So I want to keep that on everybody's mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Are there any other opponents here today? See, none, public hearing's closed. Councilmember Bagley, you're recognized. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Mr. Jobin, come on back up.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, I'm Mr. Jobin, one hundred and fourteen forty Western Road, bearing on behalf of the applicant. If I could maybe respond to a few things here and then I can answer any questions that you all might have. We do have a landscaping exhibit that shows the this is the north elevation across from Mayberry, so you can see the landscaping and this is the view. Mayberry, so you can see the landscaping, and this is the, the view. And a lot of thought was put into this from an architectural perspective to make sure that it was compatible and is compatible with the neighborhood to the west and to the north of this proposed project. It is a residential use. It's, it's not a commercial use, and we believe it is entirely compatible with the adjacent neighborhood to the west. This shows, again, we are going to extend 49th Street in this location from Mayberry to Pacific, and then from 49th Avenue to 50th Street along this location. We are working with Public Works regarding those improvements. That will be a noticeable improvement to the neighborhood. It will certainly alleviate any traffic concerns from this particular project. I will show you the traffic patterns here in a second as to how traffic will flow. But multifamily residential housing is not a high-traffic generator. It just isn't. They don't have a lot of AM and PM peak trip generations because it's multifamily, people in multifamily, just like single-family. They leave and they, they leave at all times of the day, and they come home at all times of the day. So they typically don't have a high AM or PM peak traffic volumes that are generated. This shows really the access. And so here's Saddle Creek. There's an entrance here, which that's obviously the vast majority of people will enter the site off of Saddle Creek. The commercial uses are here, which make obviously the most sense along Saddle Creek to be accessible from this entryway here. Again, remember, we have the one access point into the garage, structured parking at this location. And then again, at this location, there is a through-access street to 49th Avenue at this location. There is no access whatsoever on Mayberry, and there's no access in this part of 49th Avenue. It's only off of this particular street. People from this multifamily project, as well as the commercial uses, will in all likelihood come out onto Saddle Creek, which is more than sufficient to handle the proposed traffic generated from this particular development. And the cars that do go onto 49th Avenue can go south to Pacific and then from 49th Avenue to Pacific Street. And I believe there's a light on Pacific Street as it connects further to the, the south here when it comes down to this location. So we think we've addressed all the traffic concerns. We think this will be a noticeable improvement. As I showed you the photographs of the current existing industrial uses along Saddle Creek, we think the streetscape will be dramatically better. We think this project will look dramatically better. It will meet all the urban design codes, and that's why we put those in place some time ago. It has the major commercial corridor overlay district over it. We have TIF here. It requires that we step up the game with respect to the architectural aspects and components of the, the particular development. And what I would point out again is this right away, I understand that they have used this as just green space for a long, long time, but it is the public's property and it has been publicly dedicated for a long, long time. And like many older streets and older neighborhoods in the city of Omaha, we haven't brought some of those streets up to public standards. So this is an opportunity to do that in this particular location by extending 49th Avenue along the frontage and also improving Pacific Street from 49th to 50th. As far as the sidewalks along 49th Avenue, obviously, this is an urban section. The Omaha Municipal Code requires sidewalks be installed on both sides of the street that we're just simply complying with code requires. And code requires sidewalks on both sides of the street, which actually means that not only will you have vehicular access, but you'll also have pedestrian access where you didn't before. You had a, a green space with no sidewalks, even though it was publicly dedicated right away. As far as the meetings are concerned, we, we met with them, the neighbors, on a lot of occasions. You know, there was complaints at one point in time that we had a Zoom meeting for our first, our first neighborhood meeting, but that was when COVID was at a, a real peak in the county in December, and we couldn't find any locations to actually have a meeting in person. And I didn't want to delay anything, and we did want to get the information to everybody. And I, I talked to Colleen and, and I think Melina maybe early on in September, maybe it was just Colleen, and, you know, they were asking about this proposed development. I said, we really don't have anything to show you. We're still working with the planning department. We're still working on elevations. You know, when I show you something, when I show the neighbors something, I want it to be what we're really doing, and I want it to be nice, and I want it to be our best foot forward to make sure that we've done everything that we can do with respect to the architecture and the elevations and how the, the, the look and feel of the, the project is. So when we finally got working through with the planning department and regarding the design and the rowhouse look and the setback of the, the buildings along 49th Avenue, that was about November. We filed our application in December, and we had the meeting right away. And, and as you all know, you know, the holidays are a tough time to have meetings, but life goes on and you have to do what you have to do. And so we had a Zoom meeting, and we had a lot of people on the phone call, and, and we went through that. We also gave our cell numbers, our email addresses. They were more than free to contact us at any time. I know Randy Chevrolet and Jim Otis met as early as, what, two weeks ago, I think, with some of the neighbors, then also last week. I know Mr. Bagley's met with him a number of times, and, and Councilmember Bagley and I have been in constant communication on this project regarding addressing the neighborhood's concerns, and I'm hopeful that I did that throughout, and I responded in writing and everything else. So there was in no way any intent to not inform them, not to let them know what we were doing, not to, to keep anything from them, and really to show them how we have minimized the impacts to their neighborhood by the architectural design and the construction of the public infrastructure and the access onto Saddle Creek. And so we think it will be a noticeable improvement to this particular area. As far as, one thing that came up, I know, is, you know, where are the construction vehicles going to come from? Everything's going to come off of Saddle Creek. Nothing's going to come through their neighborhood, so there's no concern there. You know, as far as the demolition, that has to comply with all requirements of the EPA and everything else. We can't just dispose of things if there's asbestos or any materials that have to be handled in a special way. Obviously, we have to do that, so that, that shouldn't be a concern either. As far as the retaining wall, it's my understanding that there's probably an eight-to-10-foot retaining wall, maybe just at this location right here. It will have to meet all the requirements, safety requirements of the city. I mean, we can't just have an exposed retaining wall where people can fall off it and get hurt. There'll be guardrails, there'll be fences, or there'll be whatever the code requires to make sure that no one gets hurt by that retaining wall being there. As far as the, the flooding, we have to meet the 100-year flood requirements. It has to be out of the flood fringe, so, and you know, if we, the elevation has to increase a couple of feet, which we think that's probably the most it would, might have to increase, that will have to be done. There's no living space on the first two floors. That's why we have the structured parking there to address those kinds of issues as well. So other than what is called for specifically in the PUR, the planning unit redevelopment that you'll see with the final zoning, we have to comply with all zoning codes, all subdivision regulations. You know, this isn't done haphazardly, you know, and we do this all the time in the city and infill-type projects. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I did, I guess, want to add that there, this is about a $44 million project, so it's not insignificant for this particular area. And again, the public improvements, and this is without the relocation of the power pole, which we don't have necessarily a cost on that from OPBD. They gave us a cost, but it was kind of a, you know, pull one out of the air, and I think it was probably a little high. And we also don't have the full extension of 49th Avenue in these costs or the, the 49th Avenue to 50th Street extension, but, but the public improvement costs are about $321,000 with what you're seeing here, and they'll only go up and increase. So this is not an insignificant project. You've got CIP who did the Conrad, and they've done other projects within the Omaha area. They've got a number of projects in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area and Bloomington, and they have a number of projects in Lincoln. They hold their projects. They're, they own them. They don't fill them up and sell them. They're, they're always concerned about their investment, and this is a significant investment in this particular area. So I wanted to add that as well. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Jobin. Did you have your light on, Danny? Okay. We got a new system here, so.
Did I turn it off? Sorry.
Yeah. Councilmember Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Dave Fanslog, can I ask you a couple of questions, please?
Dave Fanslog, City Planning.
Dave, in a lot of the conversations and meetings I've had with the neighbors, many of which are here today, can you walk us through the process of when you have conversations with this development or a developer in general? Tell me about that process that you go through and that, how that works.
So, yeah, Dave Fanslog, City Planning. Oftentimes, there's a lot of conversations about developments, especially one of this size, right? This is, as we all recognize, not a small insignificant development proposal in our city. So oftentimes, the meetings start out very conceptual. Developer or representatives come in, meet with staff. Sometimes in, sometimes I'm in those meetings, sometimes I'm not, but staff meets with development teams all the time. Again, conceptual plans, ideas, I hate to say, you know, back of a napkin type of stuff, but sometimes it is just that. We often provide, after those meetings, will provide some guidance based on the concept plan that has probably been left with us after those meetings. So we'll go through entitlement processes. Does the, does the site need to be replanted? Does it need to be rezoned? In this case, does it need a master plan amendment? What public improvements are necessary? We work closely with our Public Works Department and oftentimes our Parks Department to, you know, just kind of analyze that concept plan and, and to provide as much guidance as we can at that point in the project or process back to the development team. Sometimes we see those projects come back to us in the form of an official application, and oftentimes, we don't. We meet with, I'll say, dozens, a dozen or two times a week with multiple people who have ideas and concepts. Some of them make it to an agenda, a planning board or city council agenda, and some don't. During those conversations, since they are just concept plans and, and those development teams or, and their representatives aren't sure what kind of feedback we will give them, those are just conversations, nothing official. So, and, and again, until we receive an application, until a developer or the representatives are ready to pull the trigger, if you will, for lack of a better term, to move forward with the entitlement process through planning board and city council, we really don't have anything official until we receive that initial application to go to planning board.
Okay. And through, through that process, if I'm hearing you correctly, and as you and I have talked over the course of weeks and months, the first plan that maybe is proposed to you, your team will tell them, you can't do this, or you need to do that, or you need to change this. It's not the first time it comes through. There are a lot of changes. Is that fair to say that there's many changes that you discussed that are made before it does see the light of the public day?
Often, more often than not, yeah, I would say the majority of the, the concept plans that we see have some work to do before staff can support them. So, again, when, when we receive that concept plan, we, we try to guide and educate that developer on, on the codes and all the, all the codes and all the ordinances that we have to follow that have been approved by this council or previous councils. Master plans, policies, all that stuff, we take a look at, and, and we try to, and we guide them to, to take into account all of, all that information that we use to help build the city. Sometimes, not very often, a development team will say, thanks for your input, but we're going to apply anyway. But most of the time, it's, it's a really good working relationship between staff and the development community to bring a plan forward that is master plan compliant, is subdivision code compliant, is zoning code compliant.
Okay. And I know Ms. Rushlaw, I believe, had mentioned that they got a, a card in the mail, and I got one as well. I think it was on, looking through all my notes, on December the 20th for a meeting that was on January the 5th. So I know, and I want to certainly yield to my colleagues in a minute, but I think it's important that when that card is sent out and the notification is made, and I get asked, well, they knew all along that this was going to happen, why didn't they tell us? And I know you, you would kind of touch on that, but it, just can you, can you go a little bit more on that? Why it was sent out on the 20th of December and the 5th of January is when the meeting was?
So sure, any notification that my department does is per state law, per, per city code, so we follow that very closely. Although the application for the January planning board meeting, which this case was on, was probably the first or beginning of the second week in December, until we, after we receive an application and all the supporting material, until it actually makes an agenda, we don't notify because we don't want to, you know, A, spend the time and the effort or notify a, a number of residents or citizens when a project might not make it on the agenda. So after we receive an application and all the supporting material, it takes us a week, week and a half to go through that and to start getting our recommendations and, and talking to other departments through that process. So we're required to notify at a certain point in time in that process, and we always meet that deadline.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for now. I'm going to yield, I know Breaker had a couple of questions. I'll follow back up after that. Thanks.
Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Fanslog, as long as we're with you for now, and then I'll have a couple of questions for Mr. Jobin as well, and maybe some of the engineers. There's been some question as to whether or not this is master plan compliant, so I'd like you to address that issue first.
I guess I'll just start off by saying, we're here for the preliminary plat. So when, if it advances and then we continue down the road of entitlement for this site, one of the requests will be for a master plan amendment, and that'll be along with the final plat and the rezoning. So if all of that is approved at that time, yes, it would be master plan compliant.
Okay. And thank you. And actually, I probably should have asked the, the next question first. Can, can we, you talked a little bit about the process with Councilmember Bagley, but we are really, we're just at the preliminary plat stage, correct?
That is correct.
And then there will still be a final plat, which also will include the PUR, correct? The planned, you know, redevelopment agreement?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. All right. So now I'll ask Mr. Jobin to, to come up. Thank you, Mr. Fanslog.
Larry Jobin, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. And, and so Councilmember Bagley was asking a little bit about process, and, and it, I think it points out the, it, this isn't just a rubber stamp. When, when a project comes in, there's a lot of scrutiny given to the applicant and what the final, what they're attempting to do and what the finished product may end up looking like. So could you walk through a little bit with the, with the PUR? I, I know we're not doing the PUR today, but at least talk about what the benefits are both for the, the developer, but also for the protection of, of abutting or adjoining or, or neighbors that the PUR brings to a, a project?
Well, I think we have our, kind of our infill development guidelines that were adopted by the council some time ago, and the whole idea was to recognize innovative projects because the problem is, in the older areas of the city, you have properties that have been platted 100 years ago or more, and those platted properties, and it's one of the reasons really why we came up with the PUR, kind of jointly between the development community and the city, is there were areas that were platted or, or properties that were platted that couldn't possibly meet today's code requirements. We have the Urban Design Code that has We have the Urban Design Code that has restrictions on retaining wall heights, we have post-construction stormwater management, we've got interior landscape requirements in the parking areas, we have extended buffer yard requirements. Well, those parcels that were platted 100 years ago couldn't possibly comply with today's zoning codes and subdivision regulations. So the, the whole idea was that then you would have to go to what they call the Zoning Board of Appeals. Well, procedurally going to the Zoning Board of Appeals meant you had to show a practical difficulty or hardship from a state law perspective. This isn't city law stuff, this is state law stuff. And that's kind of a difficult standard because you could say that, "Well, gee, in every case, the developer's kind of building, over, overbuilding the lot." Well, that's not true either, because then, I made the joke a long time ago, you would have a bunch of, not to, well, I should, I won't say the company's name because they have really small stores, but I said you'd have Jello kiosks along Dodge Street because that's all you could fit on there. So, you know, so in order to really develop properties the way they should be developed, we came up with this tool with the, the Planning Department and approved by the City Council for this planned unit redevelopment. The idea was to relax some of the site regulators when other innovative things were being implemented with the particular project. And so on this particular case, for example, we're pulling the west elevation closer to the street. Why? Because it has a more residential look and feel and character, and we pitched the roofs and, and we did some of those things to make it fit into the neighborhood, because we want to fit into the neighborhood. These guys are going to be their neighbors. So no one's trying to not fit in the fabric of the neighborhood, and so I think the Planned Unit Redevelopment Guidelines and as the PUR is applied to particular projects allow for particular properties to be compatible and, and fit in with the fabric of the neighborhood.
And then also for the, those in the neighborhood currently, I mean, it gives them an understanding or roadmap of what is to be built.
That's right. And that, and...
And any deviation from that?
Yeah. That's, I should have touched on that. With the Planned Unit Redevelopment is similar to a Planned Unit Development, which is a PUD, and so what that means is, is sort of what you see is what you get, meaning we're not going to go change things, and we can't change things materially, change or substantially change anything without going back to Planning Board, without going to City Council. So you would see this, again, if this changed for some reason. Well, it, it won't probably change, but if it does, and sometimes they do, we would have to come back to the Planning Board, we'd have to come back to the City Council. So the other benefit of the PUR, just like a PUD, is what you see is what you get.
Okay. That's, that's the point I wanted to have, too.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I know this is, we seem to be getting cart, horse mixed up here a little bit because we are talking a lot of things that don't necessarily relate to a preliminary plat. We're really talking about maybe final plats and PUR approvals as well, too.
Right.
But as long as we've already kind of set out on that journey, if you will, allow me just a couple other. You, you touched a little bit on the traffic. I think a traffic study is, has been conducted or is being conducted? Is that conducted?
It's conducted and approved. And our traffic engineers here, if you have any specific questions, but...
Okay.
Yeah, it has been conducted and approved.
Okay.
And just to add to your, your first comment, yeah, you're right, and these are all kind of part and parcel to each other, so it's hard to look at a preliminary plat. If I just showed you three lots, you'd look at me like, "Oh, what's that?" So, you know, the idea is to really present what we are trying to do here, and in doing that, unfortunately, with our processes and procedures, the way they work, the zoning comes later, and the final plat comes later, and the amendment to the master plan comes later, and so on the agenda, which you have today, is the preliminary plat. And then in two weeks, we have the redevelopment plan, public hearing.
So then, as it relates to, you also covered, but please, again, as it relates to surface runoff, which I think is a concern of some of the neighbors as well.
So, we're, so we're required, as part of the post-construction stormwater management regulations, to have no net increase in the pre-construction and post-construction runoff. So we're required to have a detention basin that, that makes sure that that occurs. Here's our detention basin in this particular area right here of the site. And so the idea is, from a water quantity, water quality standpoint, that we do everything that was required by the Omot Municipal Code with respect to stormwater runoff. So we have to do that, and we are doing that.
That's including during construction and...
Yes, exactly. Right.
Okay. I think just a couple other real quick. Landscaping, you touched on a little bit, too. And again, I realize we're talking about some things that aren't really preliminary plat...
Right.
Issues, but obviously, that, that will be part of what the PUR will show as well, too.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And, and I was talking to Randy earlier, you know, we, we are willing, you know, some of the things that we really can't do, we can't agree to perpetually maintain someone's sidewalk across the street, right?
Yeah.
And, and we don't think a fence really is appropriate because it kind of breaks up the neighborhood. I mean, I, we think that these row houses looking at a, a fence, first of all, I don't think an eight to 10-foot fence is even allowed...
It's not.
...by code, and, and we think that would be, like, that would detract from the neighborhood. We, we think that should fit together with the neighborhood, and we think this is compatible with, with what is going on across the street. We are willing to meet with them and talk about trees and planting some trees, and we can do that both on the north side and also on the west side of 49th Avenue, and we're happy to do that, and, and that's something that I think we are willing to meet with the, the neighbors and talk about some additional trees that might be planted, the types of trees. If they're going to be on the west side of 49th Street, it might be more in the form of an allowance and let them do what they want to do as far as the trees that they want, you know, to plant and take care of because they'll be on their property. So we're willing to talk with them about that, and that's the benefit also of the two, well, I guess, four-step process with the preliminary plat going to Planning Board then Council, and then the final plat going to Planning Board and Council. So there's time to, to deal with those types of issues.
So I, back to the fence, just for a quick moment. Those, first of all, you're right, the eight-foot fence would not be allowed. And also, since these likely would be front yard, these would be the front yard, those parcels that are on the west side of what would be now paved 49th Avenue, those would likely be the, the front yard, so we'd have to be concerned about the front yard setbacks as well, too, as it relates to...
Right. The fencing, exactly.
So...
And honestly, I, I don't think that if you could put an eight to 10-foot fence up, I don't know that they would be necessarily happy with it either, and certainly, from the, the row house look here, which is very residential in, in look, feel and character, it would be, I think it would be unattractive for these, it would be unattractive for the people that are residing in these row houses to look at a fence that isn't really very attractive and not inviting, you know? I think, I think the, the community is more of a community if it's all together and not fenced off from each other.
All right. Thank you. I think I'll, I'll close with this, with, again, we're dealing, what we're dealing with today is, is a preliminary plat, and I know someone asked, you know, how, how this can proceed, maybe with, with so many questions that maybe haven't been yet resolved, and that's exactly the process that we're going through, is that when a preliminary plat is approved, there are conditions that have to be met in order for it to proceed to final plat. So until those conditions are met, it would not reappear on, on our agenda. So again, that's why we're at preliminary plat stage now, and that when those conditions are met, that were required at, at Planning Board when this was approved, then it can come back to us for approval.
That's correct.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Larry, one more quick, you answered a lot of the questions that I had, and I know we got a couple of weeks, as Councilmember Harding said. So we covered the sidewalk issue on 49th Ave. The fence was covered, and I know you said the landscaping, you're still willing to look at things for the neighbors there, whether it be trees, because I know at the Bowls across from me, they have trees in front of those. So those are things we can still work through in the next couple of weeks.
Oh, well, we have even longer than that.
Yeah.
Because, because the next hearing is just the, really the TIF, the financial aspects of, of the TIF request under the redevelopment plan. So we have all the way up until the final plat that it, when it comes to you and the PUR to actually deal with the trees and, and all of those things, and, and we're willing to meet and talk about, you know, trees and whether they're on our side of the street or their side of the street. If it's their side of the street, maybe it's an allowance. If it's on our side, obviously, it's on our property, and we'll install those trees. But we're happy to meet with them and, and do tree selection as long as everybody's being reasonable and accommodating, and we're happy to meet with them and talk about those things.
Okay. Because I, I know that, you also know that we're going to continue to get emails by several of the neighbors that are here that, that I've met with, that we'll look forward to getting answers on those. And I, at this time, Colleen, if you had any other questions, if you'd like to come up, I can give you some time.
Colleen Tanner, 846 South 49th Street, 49th and Mayberry.
And Colleen, before you comment, I just, we tried through Mr. Fanslaw and Mr. Jobin. I know I didn't get all the questions that were sent to me answered, but I think we touched on a lot of them.
Yes.
So I want to make sure if I missed something that was, I know they're all important, but what are the, the one or two you wanted to cover that we missed?
Well, through this whole thing, I guess what I should have asked earlier, too, is I feel that this would be great, push down on Saddle Creek, right across from the boss. That's where this development belongs, farther down to Saddle Creek. And then the setback across from mine is, is it eight feet, I think, 20 feet, or he's still going to go with eight feet? I'm not sure. And that was a concern. Okay. Then we did talk about the height and bulk. Larry says no comment on that. But there's quite a few unanswered things yet, and I just feel we need more time. This development really doesn't need the commercial out in the front on that Saddle Creek, because, number one, that is a flood zone. The credit union bank, whatever, is going to be probably Metro Federal Credit Union because I know they are moving. There is only going to be drive-through traffic for that bank. It is not going to be a bank that you can walk in and meet with a banker and do business. So that could be all incorporated on their first floor, like some of the developments are. But... There are, there were still like five things that were still being worked on and maybe have got some answers yet, but I don't know who's done the street study, but I, and we haven't seen that, but I do not agree with if they say the streets are fine, because each and every one of you could drive out there and see that the streets are not fine and cannot hold any more traffic. So we have a lot of unanswered, and all we're asking for is you all, I have Bakers across from me in front of me, too. That's, that's a big problem that we're dealing with. And I have said some things to Dave Fanslaw, and he's provided me some comeback on some of the issues there, but I know that's going to be a continued problem. And we're pushing everything off to this department, this department, this department. When it comes down to it, what, who's really going to be there for us left after this big monster is put in? I agree with that man also earlier, where Joppers Canyon came in and all of that destroyed some of my family's businesses down there, kicked out, thrown to the street, and they put that in. And then here, we up and leave, and there's all that sitting down there. There's a lot of other places that this big development could go to, and, and they could have worked in smaller other development, smaller com plots, smaller units, or something different.
I just wanted to make sure if there was anything else that you wanted to ask Larry directly.
Well, that was on here.
And you can, okay. We'll keep working on those going forward, but I wanted to give you a second minute or two.
And maybe Larry's done them, I don't know.
Thanks.
That's it.
Okay. Larry?
Thank you. Larry Jobin, 11440 Western Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Yeah, a couple of things. The, the PUR on the north side, we're looking at doing the buffer yard from 30 feet to 20 feet, but part of that was because the, you know, the substantial and dramatic grade change of about 20 feet and fall, so that, that's why we're doing that. And then we have that landscape plan, and we're, again, willing to work with Colleen about, you know, additional landscaping along the north side. So hopefully, that will be satisfied. As far as the traffic study, and this is the approved traffic study by the Public Works Department, there were no additional public improvements required with respect to this particular project, other than showing 49th Avenue being extended and then Pacific Street between 49th Avenue and 50th Street. Other than that, there were no additional public improvements required on Saddle Creek. The only thing that was required, from my understanding and talking with the engineers, is we have to construct a three-lane section into the site, which means you have a right-in, a right-out, and a left-turn movement. And so this has to be a three-lane section at this location here to allow for the right-in, the right-out, and the left-turning movement. Other than that, there were no additional public improvements required whatsoever. So that shows you that multifamily housing doesn't really have high traffic volumes that generates a lot of public improvements, and that Saddle Creek is actually in a configuration that supports both the two commercial lots in front and also the 195 units being called for with this particular development. So, and, and as far as banking, I think we even adjusted the code requirements with respect to stacking because people do more online banking than they do drive-throughs anymore. So I think even the stacking requirements have been changed into the code, if I'm not mistaken, as far as what's required, as far as drive lanes, et cetera, because people don't go to banks anymore, they primarily do online banking. So I know that that was one of the other things that was talked about, as far as the, the credit union use is at one of the commercial lots. So with that, happy to answer any other questions.
All finished? Thank you, Councilmember Bagley. There's no more lights, but what I would like to add is, it's been a long time since I remember so much discussion on a preliminary plat. We've certainly gotten, certainly gotten ahead of ourselves on a number of topics, but that's good. That means we, we have the questions ready, and I want to remind those who are here in opposition, as you heard, there's certainly a long road ahead of us, where this particular project will be in front of us at least a couple more times, which also will involve public comment. So today, just a reminder that these are recommendations of an approval of the preliminary plat, subject to a lot of different conditions that will have to be followed before it moves forward. Thank you. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Johnson, Epstein's. Item 10, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Hamilton Village located northwest of 41st Avenue and Hamilton Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote is today on item number 10. Proponents, please.
Melvin Sudbeck, Orchard Valley Inc., 16255 Woodland, Woodland Drive. Our project's 40, 41st and Hamilton, it's a multifamily, 59 units. We've worked with staff. I don't want to get too long-winded because you've just had a long project, but we met with staff, worked with them, think, feel we've come up with a great project for the location. We didn't have any opposition at Planning Board, so I guess I'm going to keep it short and sweet. If, if there is any opposition here today, I'd have the, the chance to speak after, after that. Other than that, if you have questions, they have the, the engineers and the architects here also today. also today.
Thank you. And if so, there will be rebuttal time, no doubt. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none? Are there any opponents here today? Public hearing is closed?
There's the light on, by the way.
I apologize. Hold tight. Councilmember Johnson, you are.
Just want to point this out, that this unit is in District 2, and I'd like to have some conversation on it first, before we move on to voting on an approval. Thank you. Thank you for coming today. Can you give me some more information about what you're going to do here at this location?
Sure. Existing, there's three single-family properties on it. It was multiple unit, multiple parcels that we've, are combining into one parcel. We want to remove the existing three houses, put the 59 units on. We're looking at a 55 and older community at this site. Like I say, we've worked with all the departments, getting the parking, the drainage, landscaping, all, you know, worked through to where the city is in agreement with what we have. We'll have, the project will not have an onsite manager. It's small enough that it doesn't justify that, but we, you know, we meet all the requirements. Storm shelters, we've got some meeting rooms, got some space for, for public gathering and such in the building. Working with multiple, on the exterior, you know, we've got a good-looking building, as we're working with multiple building components on it to keep some color and some movement into the building and working with urban design on that as well.
Any public improvement?
There is some public improvement. We have to, you know, do some adjustment with parking right-ofways. So, you know, those items, we have worked with staff on.
Okay. And it's my understanding that when you first go in and put in, because Mr. Fanslaw kind of gave us a lineup on the process of development, and he shared with us that when you first met with the, with your plan, you started with a conceptual idea in terms of what you were going to do. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
And then the planning department gives you guidance in terms of what you should do next?
Right.
And one of those recommendations for guidance would have been to reach out to the city council of that district. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And did you reach out to me?
Jim Posey, to my understanding, has reached out and visited with you on this project.
Okay.
And Jim is here today, too, if you'd like to ask Jim a question.
Good afternoon. Jim Posey, 19710 Marcy Circle.
Okay, Mr. Posey, can you give me some feedback on reaching out? This is for my constituents, so that...
Sure, sure, sure. I met, we met one morning at Scooter's Coffee Shop, and I kind of brought some plans and showed you some floor plans and what we wanted to do. While this isn't technically in the TOD, it is on, you know, a bus line, and that was part of what, you know, we engaged Matt to make sure that that process was, you know, wasn't going to change. Have met with the neighborhood organizations, president of the neighborhood, been to a couple of their HOA meetings. Hopefully, that's a sign of why we didn't have opposition, because we've engaged that process, and that was why I reached out and engaged you in the process.
Okay. And just for the record, who was the neighborhood president that you reached out to?
Can I send you an email?
Sure.
I'm sorry. I, I, I can take you to his house. I know he's right on the corner.
Do you know, do you know the Neighborhood Association?
I did at the time.
Okay.
He's a Realtor. I'm trying to remember. I wish his name would come to me.
Okay, in the future, that's very important to constituents in District 2, because far too often residents, just like the other group that was here a short while ago, with concerns about not being included, we can mitigate those concerns when we are able to say, you know, we met with this Neighborhood Association, with that Neighborhood President, those kinds of things. It makes it very difficult for a representative such as myself to answer questions with residents when I don't have that information. So that's very challenging. And in an area that's underserved, it's very important that inclusion is done. If we ever want to develop undeserved communities, undeserved communities, we have to educate, we have to include, we have to see what their needs are. And so I just want to make sure and echo that that's something that's very important, especially in District 2. And granted, this project is very important, and it definitely provides a benefit in terms of development and improvement of the overall area. But we just want to make sure that we include everyone, because we want them to feel like they're a part of the process. And we have people in this community that really, 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 really need to have a voice. And we want them to have a voice, not only about things that's happening in their day-to-day lives. We want them to be actively engaged in the political process. We want the voter turnout to improve. We want all of those things to happen in our area, because we want to move to a different direction than what we have in decades in the past. So I just wanted to give you some information in terms of why I'm asking these questions. It has nothing to do with you or your project in particular. It's just, so again, for my constituents to understand that I am standing for them in the absence that they're not here today, to make sure that these, these things are addressed.
And you see too many projects and too many things for you to remember everything. I get it. I did give you a plan and a site plan.
I remember everything that you gave me.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that I, because I was like, you know, I wanted to engage you in the process, and I engaged the community in the process as part of it, very much.
Yeah, I remember meeting at Scooter's. I have those documents. Have a very good memory.
I, obviously, because you deal with a lot of stuff, so I think stuff can get lost in there.
And, but again, my line of questioning
Yeah, I get it.
was for the sole purpose of District 2, and I would like to echo the sentiments of making sure that residents are included in things that will impact their day-to-day lives, and development will impact their day-to-day life. And I would, just want to make sure that everyone is included. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, I will go ahead and move that this be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll ask Councilmember Melton to remove her second. Remove my motion, so that Councilmember Johnson can make her motion.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. No more lights? We need, we have a motion? We have a second? Roll call.
Harding. Johnson.
Yes.
Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, six to zero. Items 11 through 14 can be considered together for Heartland of America Park, Replat 1, located at 8th and Douglas Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 11, in ordinance to rezone this property from DS District and CBD District to CBD District. Item 12, in ordinance to mend the boundaries of the ACI 1 overlay District. Items 13 and 14 are resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat.
Public hearing and vote on items 11 through 14 begin at this time. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Chris Koenig with HDR, 1917 South 67th Street, on behalf of the proponent.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Seeing none? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
If you would come up front, please. Can I ask you the same question that I asked of the other gentleman? Have you reached out to the representative?
We have not. This is a, this is essentially a city-led project, and so the replat was done to, as part of the Heartland America Park Riverfront Redevelopment Project. And so when the Heartland America Park was done back originally, there was a lot of remnant parcels underneath the I-480 area, just to the south of that. And then with the project itself, what we're doing is we're actually realigning Douglas Street and extending it down through that area. And so part of this replat is to provide that street right-ofway for Douglas Street, for the future Douglas Street that's going to cross into Lewis and Clark Landing. And then also, it'll create a development site on the north side of Douglas Street, right at that site, and then also clean up. There was a, it was a, it was a jumble of parcels that had to be cleaned up in that area. That's how it was just the purpose. It was more just housekeeping.
Okay. And have you reached out to the residents, the neighborhood president in this area?
We have not.
Okay. So going forward, we will make sure that we do that?
Yes.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Also, maybe just back a little bit. We did have several public hearings as part of the Riverfront Project when this was first proposed. And so, and so we did have those public hearings over the last several years, but not specifically about the replat itself.
Okay. Again, engagement, inclusion, those are things that are real important if we want to grow as a city.
Agreed.
And so I would like for you to, you know, incorporate that in your, in your practices going forward, if you would, please.
Understood.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and recommend that this be approved.
Roll call.
Harding. Johnson.
Yes.
Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Items 11 through 14 are approved, six to zero. Items 15 through 17 can be considered together for Summer Hill Farm, located southeast of 168th and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 15, in ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R4 District. Item 16, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 17, a resolution to approve the First Amendment to the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote today on items 15 through 17 begin at this time. Proponents, please.
Jeff Stoll, E&amp;X, holding group, 10909 Millard Road. I'm here representing the applicant. I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none? The public hearing is closed? Roll call.
John, or Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Items 15 through 17 are approved, six to zero. Item 18, in ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district located northwest of 30th Avenue and Mason Street, and to approve the development plan. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote are today on item 18. Proponents, please.
Stephen Hoadle, dial 11506 Nicholas Street, on behalf of the applicant. I can answer any questions you have about the project.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Seeing none? Are there any opponents? Seeing none? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, six to zero. Item 19, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow auto sales in the CC District, located at 2322 and 2334 North 90th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing and vote on item 19 begins at this time. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Mark Sanford, I'm the architect for the project. My client is here, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have about our project. Thank you.
Thank you. Put your address one more time, please.
Mark Sanford, 1306 North 162nd Street, Omaha, 68118.
Okay.
Mark Sanford, group architect.
Thank you for that. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none? Are there any opponents? Seeing none? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 20, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow small group living, located at 506 South 27th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing and vote today begin at this time on item 20. Proponents, please.
Lance Brown, representing New Journey's Transitional Living, 2041 South 195th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68130. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none? Are there any opponents? Seeing none? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved, six to zero. Item 21, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow auto sales in the CC District, located at 4835 South 97th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing and vote are today on item 21. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Holden with Airheart Griffin &amp; Associates, 3552 Farnham Street. Here on behalf of the owner and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for being here. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Item 21 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Items 22 and 23 can be considered together for property located at 8838 Maple Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 22, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow construction, sales, and service in the CC District. Item 23, in ordinance to mend the boundaries of the MCC overlay District to incorporate this property into that district.
The public hearing and vote begin at this time on items 22 and 23. Proponents, please.
My name is Ron Gallo, and I'm with Design Associates, the architects for this project. My address is 1005 North 146th Circle, Omaha. I'm also, with me is the owner, the buyer of the land. We have an offer condition on getting this special use permit and what, to get it approved. So the buyer's with me, Jason, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have of the project.
I appreciate that. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Item 22 and 23 are approved, six to zero. Item 24, to consider a Class B liquor license for Family Dollar Store, number 24926, located at 5135 South 36th Street.
The public hearing and vote are today on item 24. Are there any proponents? Actually, we do have one via Zoom. Jonathan Crumley.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, welcome.
I'm here to answer any questions on behalf of Family Dollar for this application.
Okay, I appreciate you being here. I do have a couple of questions for you, actually. I did have some nearby residents that reached out to me, and I looked, and I just wasn't sure. Could you tell me what this liquor license that you have, I believe it's for beer only, and in this store or your stores, do you sell single-serve beers?
Yeah, it is for beer only, and they do in some stores. We've communicated with this location, and if necessary, they're willing to not sell singles. They would prefer that just for their business model, but that is, as I've asked them, not a hill they need to die on. They would prefer that just for their business model, but that is, as I've asked them, not a hill they need to die on.
Okay, I appreciate that. And the reason I bring that up is obviously there is a large youth sports complex just across the street. And certainly, we want to be good neighbors and we certainly don't want those parents to use this place of business as its own icebox. So if you'd like to put that on the record, I'd ask you to make that part of your liquor license moving forward.
Happy to do that. And having been general counsel for a large youth sports group here near Atlanta, just outside, I have no problem with that request and those concerns.
Okay, thank you. I sure appreciate you being here today. Oh, yeah, that's right. Sorry. Sorry about that, Councilmember Melton. Are there any other proponents here today on item 24? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Public hearing is closed.
With the recommendation, no single-use stipulation. Does it have to be an amendment? Move to amend to have no single-use sales. Is that the correct way to state it, Mr. Cuzzi?
Yeah, Cuzzi Law Department, I think that'll suffice.
Thank you. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you for your time.
Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 25, to consider a liquor license addition application for El Rancho Restaurant located at 2030 Martha Street to add an area approximately 34 feet by 70 feet to their Class C liquor license.
The public hearing and vote today on item 25 begin at this time. We have with us via Zoom Carmela Barrera.
Yes.
Like to open it up for proponents. So that would be you, ma'am.
Okay. Good afternoon. This is Yvonne Estrella with my mom as well, Carmela Barrera. Just here for El Rancho Grande Inc. at 2030 Martha Street. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Item 25 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearing on agenda items 26 through 32 were held on March 8, 2022. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 33 through 61 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, your address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent.
Here for item number 33, Mark Tyner, representing Longhorn Steakhouse, 7425 Dodge Street.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Seeing no lights. Oh, sorry. Alex, you here for this one? Okay. Roll call. Do I have to close the public hearing on that? Okay, public hearing is closed.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 62, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 30 and to add new sections 30-38 and 30-39 of the Omaha Municipal Code regarding catalytic converters is amendment of the whole requested by the law department.
So this item number was postponed from the March 8 City Council meeting. The public hearing was already, has already taken place. So is there a motion? Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 63, an ordinance to approve the bid from BMI Janitorial Group for janitorial services for the facilities management facility at a cost of $17,716 per year.
Public hearing today on item 63 begins at this time. Proponents, please. Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. The public hearing is closed.
Item 64, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the University of Nebraska at Omaha in the amount of $26,994 and to authorize funding for such agreement from the City of Omaha's Fiscal Year 2020 Project Safe Neighborhoods grand award.
Public hearing today on item 64. Public hearing begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I didn't have time to do my homework. But I'd like to have some definition of what this research about safer neighborhoods is all about. We have a shooting just about every day announced on the TV news at 10 o'clock. I wonder if this affects my neighborhood or just what area it covers, what it's generally about. I see that it's a grant of some sort. But obviously, the university makes money on it somehow. And how's this protect the citizen? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Store. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none. Public hearing is closed.
Item 92, a resolution to approve a professional services agreement with HDR in the amount of $494,613.76 to provide design services for the Downtown Branch Library and Library Central Distribution Facility.
Public hearing and vote are today on item 92. The public hearing begins at this time. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Vice President, members of the council. Kevin Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff in the mayor's office. Here before you is a professional service agreement for architectural services coinciding with the relocation of the Downtown Dale Clark Library to new locations approved by this body at 1401 Jones to serve as a downtown neighborhood branch and 84th and Frederick Street to serve as temporary location for main library service and distribution of library branch services across the community. So this was discussed this morning at the pre-council meeting and as laid out by the owner's representative, Noddo Companies, and Mr. Jay Noddo, again, of which that agreement was approved by this body. They worked through this process and put out a bid process by which they had one respondent, though a good level of interest in the contract. HDR is what is being presented to you with their subconsultant, Margaret Sullivan &amp; Associates, to work through this process of the design of tenant improvements for both locations and will work with both the library system and staff, library board, as well as other stakeholders for the design of improvements and program and services associated with these two sites. As was laid out through this process and through negotiations by owner's representative, Noddo Companies, we will, by we, the city will realize cost savings at the 1401 Jones location in that MEP or mechanical and electric and plumbing services will now largely come under our owner landlord. So what will be coming back to this body will likely be an amendment to the lease agreement so that the costs associated with some of those improvements are now borne by that landlord and not necessarily taken out of the city's contribution for those improvements for the facility. So I think it's an example of how our owner's representative is working on our behalf and working on the behalf of citizens of Omaha to maximize the efficiency of this process, but also realize any cost savings through the process as well. So I'll be around for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents?
Alex O'Handon, 310 Lincoln Boulevard. I was trying to pull something off the consent agenda. I got confused. But so I'll also comment on this, though. Here as a opponent, because I was opposed to the entire process that has gone through with the library and I don't know, all I got left is to just keep kicking and screaming the whole way. I know that we talked about, like in this process, and we also drew attention to this in the Saddle Creek, the CIP Saddle Creek, that there's going to be all these different steps through the way, along the way that require approval. And so this is one of those other steps along the way that require approval where folks can have a say. So I just wanted to say that I'm opposed to this funding because I don't think that this was the right decision to make in the first place. Therefore, I hope that folks that felt that this wasn't the right decision to make in the first place will continue to uphold their original decisions. And also, I wish that we had this same lust for improving and upkeeping historical preservation in all other parts of the city and when we make other decisions, such as the 38th and Dodge apartments that are, the houses that are going to be knocked down. So I do love to see the historical preservation. And I wish, and I hope that we keep that same energy when we go towards other developments. But overall, opposed to this because this process has been wrong from the beginning, so it's still wrong. Thank you. Also, I'm going to try better on that consent agenda next week.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm really opposed to this because I do not feel that there's been enough transparency on this whole process and whether or not we actually need to remove that building for something else. I think the citizenry is completely confused as to whether a mutual of Omaha is or is not and wondering about who will be. And then, who will be for a while and how long will it be before they move out, as we've seen in the past? This building probably could be used for something very nice. Not another big tall building so that people can look out at each other from First National Bank or whatever or have a bar up on top. We may need the money for a lot of other things very shortly. So I think you need to step lightly and maybe vote against demolishing a library that may not be used very much anyhow in the very near future because people are doing everything online. But then, of course, if we lose our networks due to a war, we probably will want a downtown library. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none. Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Johnson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Anderson, I do have a few questions.
Kevin Anderson, Mayor's Office.
Thank you. While we kind of covered this through our preliminary meeting this morning, I just want this to go on record. Is there a time that the building will be up and running for business on Jones Street?
It's too early to tell. We are running with the goal of January 1, 2023. But we've got contractors on site, hard at work and have been for some time. As we move further along the process, a clear picture of a completion date will come to light, at which point we'll engage not only council but stakeholders on the anticipated timeline and path forward from there.
And is there a plan to publicly engage people as we go along the way? Should there be an extension of not having a library or an alternate route to those services? Is there a plan to notify constituents that would be directly impacted by this shift?
Yeah, as we get closer to that, having that complete picture, while, you know, a plan may not be accurate, I will commit that between the city and our owner's rep, we will kind of work through a process by which we will engage stakeholders on a path forward should our, you know, goal timeline for moving at 1401 Jones not be met, of which we will engage in kind of intermediary steps by which we can minimize any disruption to library services downtown.
Thank you. And then one final question. As we're aware, this library served a large amount of underserved community. And therefore, we also have a public transportation system that's very lacking in terms of providing good public transportation in a number of ways. And I won't go into those ways, but we talked earlier today about talking with Metro Area Transit and coming up with something that would be more feasible so that constituents could benefit with the move of the library on Jones Street.
Yeah, that's correct. And we've already began engaging and working with Metro Transit on paths to optimize routes in that general area to really kind of maximize the accessibility via transit through that area. This agreement in place here will also help us through that process as we begin to design and program the services that will be held at this new location. We'll have a better idea of the types of visits we'll be getting out of that process. And we just want to make kind of very well-known, especially to the public, that now that this is a downtown neighborhood branch and not our main library location, we do anticipate those kind of more broad community-based visits to downtown to change and that, you know, some of those more, you know, community-wide visits or main branch services will be moving out to that more central location. And so that's going to change the traffic levels and certainly the kind of geographic pole by which visitors are now coming to the downtown branch. So as we work through this design process, we'll have a much better picture of the specific services that will be held out of the new downtown branch, which will give us a much better idea of who those visitors are and what those trips are generating in terms of that community-wide will help us kind of optimize those transit opportunities.
And so when we get a more concrete plan regarding what those numbers are and we have a finalized schedule from Metro Area Transit in terms of transportation, routes of service, hours of service, will we also have a commitment that that will be publicized so that everyone impacted by this change will be notified so that they can make their plans and make their directions in terms of getting to and fro from the library, from their homes and to the library in a more concise manner in terms of planning?
Yes, and we've got a really good opportunity to do so as the library system is currently undergoing their strategic plan. So we've got kind of a natural conduit by which we can directly engage with interested constituents.
So that would mean, yes, you would publicize those?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been serving on the library committee and I just wanted to assure everyone that there is going to be a lot of communication coming out on the whole library system. There's constituent meetings that are already scheduled, some into April. You know, they'll be coming out as we get closer to those dates. But there's going to be plenty of opportunity for community engagement on all those kinds of topics. And I just wanted to make sure that people were aware those discussions are going on right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Rowe. Seeing no other lights? Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Item 92 is approved, six to zero. Non-action items, items 65 through 90, do not require public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 4:29.